Hopefully that helps.
I mean, I work down.
Lots going on.
Sometimes this room has terrible allergies.
And it happens to Kristi too.
In here?
Yeah.
Great!
I was about to say it's the new carpet.
Maybe it was the portal net.
I don't know.
It's the sticky squares when they painted the room.
Yeah, yeah.
You were just doing five minutes ago or five days?
Mine was just spinning to death.
I love that.
These were just...
It's like no hope.
No hope for that.
Can I get a minute?
That was not appropriate.
Your screen.
Right, yeah, exactly.
All right, 6 o'clock, actually 6:01, sorry. But we'll go ahead and get started. And Maddox, I believe you're up. Thank you for being here tonight.
Of course, thank you. I hope all of you guys had a good summer. I'm back, so just getting this all started.
More importantly, did you have a good summer?
I did. I had a great summer. So, went to Lake Powell and camping.
Nice.
Just a little update with ETC. We have two new members, so we have six now. So still not as big as before my freshman year. But better. We have an event on Friday. I think it's just the ETC Fall Party. I'm not sure exactly. But it's gonna be at the Hutchinson Pumpkin Patch. So if you're driving towards Salida on the left side, there's gonna be barbecue, hot drinks like hot chocolate and apple cider hopefully, games, I think there's gonna be a movie. I believe Charlie Brown Thanksgiving. It's gonna be from 4:00 to 6:30 PM. Possibly live music. I don't think so, but we'll see. So just a free event for youth. So hopefully after this, I'll get that posted on Instagram.
And youth meaning what I try to...
Just the high school like most of our events. But anybody just from around the area, teenager.
Okay.
What was the date?
It's this Friday. So I don't have the date written down. I don't know.
That would be the 7th.
Yeah. If you're driving towards Salida, it'd be on the left. Like where they do the pumpkin patch stuff. Like the homestead.
Homestead's on the right side.
Towards Salida?
If you're driving from Pancho.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, sorry, I should've done the other way. But I live in Pancho, so...
We would be driving from here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If you're driving in the direction where the poop is gonna be coming from.
Driving with the poop.
Right, right.
I'm glad we come back.
Yeah, yeah. Finally. So... And I don't really have any other updates now. Because we just kind of ended with doing that survey and then we got into summer. So what do you guys want to know? Do you have anything right now? I don't think I have any good issues to present as of now.
Would you mind sharing a little bit about the recruitment process? You mentioned you're at six and you've had more in the past and sort of like how that's going or how you go about that?
Yeah, it's difficult. It's hard to get people to volunteer. And so, but we just got them just kind of by word of mouth. I know Rihanna's in my advisory. So I was talking to her and got her to join. There's some other people that might have some interest. But it's just difficult with that. We try to do some recruiting at different events. Like with the signup sheet, we try to get people to join with... They have to leave numbers or things like that. Also, in the past, we've gone to the middle school and we had a table set up with cards that they could use. I believe we've done that same kind of thing. Just wherever we are have like an option to try to get people pulled in with different snacks and other ways to bring them in. So we don't have a big thing right now. I'm sure that we'll have something like that at this next event. But most of it seems to just be word of mouth that people actually end up joining.
Thanks. Anything else?
I just want to say thank you. It's been a pleasure to hear from the extraordinary teen council throughout the years and thanks for doing the work. While it might not feel like you have a big participation or volunteer force right now, you know, we've seen it from before the ETC came to be. So it's really important work and I appreciate it.
Well, you're welcome and thank you for mentioning that. I think it's fine with what we have. It doesn't affect what we do all that much. I think just with more people, maybe you could do more events. But I don't know. I don't think it's that big of a deal. I think we still get everything done just fine. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Great. Thanks, Maddox. Thank you guys too.
Okay. Next up, we have, I'm just gonna say the Chafee Housing update so that I don't throw shade at the guy next to you. More the authority than the trust.
Good evening, everybody. Nice to see you. Hope everyone is well. I don't want to take a bunch of time kind of reiterating what's in there, but I just want to draw your attention to a few things just in case you didn't read it. And then if anyone has any questions, then I'll turn it over to read. Jane's Place, we, at least for now, if this nice weather sticks around, are still anticipating that we will go through a CO process mid-December on time, on budget. Yay! And I'm still trying to figure out how to send out a marketing email to you, but you are about to get an invite to the ribbon cutting. And we would love it if the mayor would be on the line with the scissors. Super excited about that. The flower mill application for $1.1 million went into HDG to the state and is in its next sort of level of approvals. So we're hopeful that by December, we will know whether that funding was awarded. That's sort of the last big hurdle for those 20 apartments in that first phase of flower mill, which many of you have been through the whole process. So I'm sure this feels exciting. To our excitement, but also like, ah! Because we don't know yet where we're gonna find all the money. We did negotiate with the Anglican Mission in America to put in a first right of refusal offer or purchase option on two of the five properties. And while that did not stop displacement, nor will it, you know, we'll be able... If we were to acquire it, we would not be able to offer rents at $500 a month. We hope that we can move forward with that acquisition and ensure that those properties, at least the 10 units, stay in affordable housing, particularly our ability to potentially preserve a historic building in the downtown core. So I will keep you updated on that. We have some funding cycles identified and a secondary funder, but not yet a primary funding source. And that's been sort of happening since we found out about it and we're pretty excited we have this option. And their board chair was actually really wonderful to work with and hope that we can get a win-win out of this. But of course, funding independent. Other sort of key thing I wanted to kind of identify is we are with Jane's Place incorporating homeless housing on-site. And there's a number of things sort of related to that. But we're making one adaption, or two I should say. When Jane's Place was initially conceived, there was the notion that that would possibly be where the warming shelter, winter shelter goes. And after a lot of work, research, etc., as we were doing our own programming and sort of lessons learned from the Stable Families program, it wasn't really the appropriate site. So rather, we're looking at transferring and having the bridge housing between emergency shelter and moving into permanent housing occur for families at Jane's Place rather than in hotels. And one of the reasons is that we think we can gain some efficiency in price points. And just as an example, the last two years that we have had funding, we've had about $45,000 to use on emergency housing for hotels annually. This year, we had an increase in families, particularly around the summer months. Some of that is better marketing, more staffing, a lot of the work we're doing. Some of it could be circumstances. Some of it is just people are referring to each other. But we've spent, by December, we will have spent pretty much that $45,000. And that was our funding pool for 2020. June, July 1st through June 30th of next year. And mainly, that is because we were spending $300 and some dollars a night during the summer months to put people in hotels. So we burned through that money quickly. We think that Jane's Place will provide that gap for us and we're doing some fundraising, all of those things. The other thing that we are looking to use Molly House for in terms of meeting vulnerable population needs is we've seen an increase in seniors coming to us who are housing insecure. Either their costs of living are increasing and therefore they're no longer able to meet rent. We try to refer them to other ways to manage money. You know, go to a food shelter, that sort of thing. So that's one. The other is principally people who've been living in RVs and really are aging out of that lifestyle, but are living on fixed incomes. I don't know about you guys, but I thought van life was my retirement plan and I'm beginning to reconsider and have a secondary plan as I realize what happens when you're no longer able to maintain a vehicle or no longer capable of really being mobile. So we have been doing a lot of research to how we might serve that population as the Lytec project that the city is going to have come on board will have some 30% AMI units. There are other apartments that serve that population, but there is a waiting list. And so what we think that we can do with one of the two-bedroom apartments in Molly House is have a shared senior living bridge housing there where they're there only while they're waiting and on a waitlist to get into another unit. And it'll be sort of an experiment, but that's one of the programming changes. But we are noticing that change in our community and trying to figure out... Their needs are just very different than, say, a warming shelter. You may have noticed, we are recruiting new board members. And that process, there has been a board development committee that has been really focused on improving the process for this sort of annual cycle. The last cycle was a vacancy and so you had that process yourselves. But you know, each year, we recruit replacements. And the board has made some improvements and efficiencies with the work of all of the administrators and managers. There is a single application site now rather than you have to apply to different places. And then those applications will go to a committee which consists of Kristi and the county and the town, our board chair. And they'll sort of then kind of create the pool of applicants that will be reviewed by a committee. I think Kristi probably has some recommendations as well. But one of the things that we have not completed, the application recruitment process announcements are all out, is who will sit on the review committee and what that will look like. Do you want it to be your administrator? Do you want it to be someone from the board? And that decision will be pending at some point here soon. I will be asking you that tomorrow during council updates, so please be thinking about it. And if you have any questions about the process, we can provide you even more detail. There's more background. But generally, the goal is to ensure that people who might qualify in two places then have the option to potentially interview for both, but not necessarily have to apply to both, if that makes sense. Anyhow, that was a great improvement. And then lastly, much like you were in budgeting, so after our budget is adopted in the new year, I plan on kind of coming forward to kind of tell you what's... So we don't have a big thing right now. I'm sure that we'll have something like that this next event. But most of it seems to just be word of mouth that people actually end up joining.
Thanks. Anything else?
I just want to say thank you. It's been a pleasure to hear from the extraordinary teen council throughout the years and thanks for doing the work. Um, while it might not feel like you have a big participation or volunteer force right now, um, you know, we've seen it from before the E T C came to be, so it's really important work and I appreciate it.
Well, you're welcome and uh, thank you for mentioning that. I think it's fine with what we have. It doesn't affect what we do all that much. I think just with more people, maybe you could do more events. But I don't, I don't know. I don't think it's that big of a deal. I think we still get everything done just fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Maddox. Okay. Thank you guys, too.
Okay. Next up, we have, I'm just gonna say the Chaffey Housing update, so that I don't throw shade at the guy next to you.
More the authority than the trust.
Good evening, everybody. Nice to see you. Hope everyone is well. Um, I don't want to take a bunch of time kind of reiterating what's in there, but I just want to draw a couple of, um, draw your attention to a key few things, just in case you didn't read it. And then if anyone has any questions, and then I'll turn it over to Reed. Um, Jane's Place, we, at least for now, if this nice weather sticks around, are still anticipating that we will go through a C O process mid-December. Uh, on time, on budget. Yay! Uh, and I'm still trying to figure out how to send out a marketing email to you, but you are about to get an invite to the ribbon cutting. Uh, and we would love it if the mayor would be on the line with the scissors. Um, super excited about that. Uh, the flower mill application for one point one million dollars went into H D G uh, to the state and is in its next sort of level of approval. So we're hopeful that by December, we will know whether that funding was awarded. That's sort of the last big hurdle for those twenty twenty apartments. Um, and that first phase of flower mill, which many of you have been through the whole process, so I'm sure this feels exciting. Um, to our excitement, but also like, ah, because we don't know yet where we're gonna find all the money. Um, we did negotiate with the uh Anglican Mission in America to put in a first right of refusal offer or purchase option on two of the five properties. And while that did not stop displacement, nor will it, you know, will be able, if we were to acquire it, we would not be able to um, offer rents at five hundred dollars a month. Uh, we hope that we can move forward with that acquisition and ensure that those properties, at least the ten units stay in affordable housing, particularly our ability to potentially preserve a historic building in the downtown core. Uh, so I will keep you updated on that. We have some funding cycles identified, uh, and a secondary funder, but not yet a primary funding source. Uh, and that's been sort of happening since we found out about it and we're pretty excited. We have this option. And their board chair was actually really wonderful to work with and hope that we can get a win-win out of this, but of course, funding independent. Um, other sort of key thing I wanted to kind of identify is we are with Jane's Place incorporating homeless um, housing on site. And there's a number of things sort of related to that. But we're making one adaption or two, I should say. Uh, when Jane's Place was initially conceived, um, there was the notion that that would possibly be where the warming shelter, winter shelter goes. And after a lot of work, research, et cetera, as we were doing our own programming and sort of lessons learned from the Stable Families Program. Um, it wasn't really the appropriate site, uh, so rather we're looking at transferring and having the bridge housing between emergency shelter and moving into permanent housing occur for families at Jane's Place rather than in hotels. And one of the reasons is that we think we can gain some efficiency in price points. And just as an example, the last two years that we have had funding, we've had about forty-five thousand dollars to use on emergency housing for hotels annually. Um, this year, we had an increase in families, particularly around the summer months. Some of that is better marketing, more staffing, a lot of the work we're doing. Um, some of it could be circumstances. Some of it is just people are referring to each other. Um, but we've spent, by December, we will have spent pretty much that forty-five thousand dollars. And that was our funding pool for twenty twenty June, July first through June thirtieth of next year. And mainly that is because we were spending three hundred and some dollars a night during the summer months to put people in hotels. So we burned through that, that money um, quickly. We think that Jane's Place will provide that gap for us and we're doing some fundraising, um, all of those things. Uh, the other thing that we are looking to use Molly House for in terms of meeting um, vulnerable population needs is we've seen an increase in seniors coming to us who are housing insecure. Either their costs of living are increasing and therefore they're no longer able to meet rent. We try to refer them to other ways to manage money, you know, go to food shelter, that sort of thing. Um, so that's one. The other is um, principally people who've been living in R Vs and really are aging out of that lifestyle, but are living on fixed incomes. Um, I don't know about you guys, but I thought van life was my retirement plan and I'm beginning to reconsider and have a secondary plan as I realize what happens when you're um, no longer able to maintain a vehicle or no longer capable of really being mobile. Um, so we have been doing a lot of research to um, how we might serve that population as the Lytec project that the city is going to have come on board will have some thirty percent A M I units. There are other apartments that serve that population, but there is a waiting list. And so what we think that we can do with one of the two-bedroom apartments in Molly House is have a shared senior living, bridge housing there where they're there only while they're waiting and on a waitlist to get into another unit. And it'll be sort of an experiment, but that's one of the programming changes. Um, but we are noticing that change in our community, uh, and trying to figure out their needs are just very different than, say, a warming shelter. Uh, you may have noticed, uh, we are recruiting new board members. Uh, and that process, there has been a board development committee that has been really focused on improving the process for this um, sort of annual cycle. Uh, the last cycle was a vacancy and so you had that process yourselves, but you know, each year we recruit replacements. And the board has made some improvements and efficiencies with the work of all of the administrators and managers. There is a single application site now, rather than you have to apply to different places. And then those um, applications will go to a committee, which consists of Christie and the county and the town, um, our board chair, and they'll sort of then kind of create the pool of applicants that will be reviewed by a committee. Uh, I think Christie probably has some recommendations as well, but one of the things that we have not completed, the application recruitment process announcements are all out, is who will sit on the review committee? Um, and what that will look like. Do you want it to be your administrator? Do you want it to be someone from the board? Uh, and that decision will be pending um, at some point here soon.
I will be asking you that tomorrow during uh, council update, so please be thinking about it.
Yeah. And if you have any questions about the process, we can provide you even more detail. There's more background, but um, generally, um, the goal is to um, ensure that people who might qualify in two places then have the option to potentially interview for both, but not necessarily have to apply to both, if that makes sense. Uh, anyhow, that was a great improvement. Uh, and then lastly, much like you were in budgeting, so after our budget is adopted in the new year, I plan on kind of coming forward to kind of tell you what's in that, but if you have any questions before then, um, it is posted on our website and I provided you the link. And I think I will see some of you tomorrow as well. Uh, I don't know if you were able to forward the email I sent you on the S T Rs.
Yes, I sent it today.
Um, so if there are any questions on that, I'm happy to address those as well.
That was a great report. Thanks so much for putting that together.
Does anyone have any questions before we turn it over to Reed?
Yeah, um, Marjo, can you just speak a little bit towards the discussion you had with Art Space?
Yeah, so um, sure. Uh, so Art Space was as one of their, they just sort of reached out to kind of connect with us. So some time ago, um, when they were in, and still in the process of looking at grants. And one of the uh, application types that they were contemplating is something called a middle income housing tax credit. I don't know if they spoke to that in their just latest discussions with you. Um, it's a newer funding type of funding in uh, Colorado. Thus far, it's been applied only in Granby. They just completed, uh, they, B and the State and Partners completed the first, it's called My Tech Project in um, in Granby. It's a complicated pool of money. Uh, and you know, we've been doing our best to try to learn about it. We thought it might be something we would apply for, but again, it's much like Lytec. It's got a series of sort of standards and complications to it, but its goal is more um, middle income, which the Art Space would qualify for because it's eighty to a hundred and twenty percent of A M I. If they apply for that and are able to move an application forward for that funding cycle or for that funding pool, one of the benefits of any income tax credit project, middle or low, is a partnership with a housing authority for tax abatement. Um, and a partnership on referrals as well. You get points on your applications. So we both uh, mentioned that, of course, we would be willing to entertain that type of partnership. We articulated what our partnership kind of standards are and then um, asked to, you know, keep us in mind on however we can be supportive of that project.
And for clarification, uh, Art Space did apply for that and when we gave an update at one of our last council meetings that they um, were asked to bring forward an application, but then I believe three of the four applicants were funded and unfortunately, our project was not, so they have.
Scale is an issue on My Tech. Uh, it's one of the reasons we were not applying it to any of our projects. Uh, and you know, it's some of the same problem challenges you have with um, low-income housing tax credits, since they need to be generally of certain sizes in order to make it all work. So that could have been one of the issues.
Thanks.
Sure.
Thanks for the opportunity to give an update. Number one milestone that I'd love to share with you or happy to share with you right now is that the M and third project is fully occupied. We've sold four, uh, the four units that we said we were gonna sell, and then we've got two renters in the um, it's a primary and an A D U, but it's basically a duplex. And so renters in there, everybody's under eighty percent A M I. And that project is finally successfully completed. So you guys have all changed over seats multiple times since then, but uh, finally done. So through COVID and everything, we survived that. Um, the West End project similarly, uh, you probably recall some of the battles over that. Um, but five of those units are eighty percent A M I, four of them are sold. And we have two renters in the eighty percent unit that remains. And then because it was duplexes, uh, Torrey Upchurch, the developer, threw in another unit because it can't build half a duplex. Um, so that one's at a hundred percent A M I, so we still have two units to sell there, one at eighty, one at a hundred. Um, so looking for people who could fit that profile, um, and hopefully finding them soon. This last year, we've had eight sales, um, which is matching our record from twenty twenty-two in a single year, and we're hoping to have a ninth, a resale actually up in Buna Vista. And we've got a couple of folks who are now turning over their homes and reselling them. So um, that process is now starting to churn and in a good way. And that affordable housing stock will stay affordable in perpetuity. So pretty excited about those. Other than that, we've hired new staff, which is really exciting. So we have a development, a person who's working on our mobile home parks. We have one in Johnson Village and one in Pontius Springs. And he's taken on management, maintenance and infrastructure for those. Um, and we hired a person up in Leadville to manage our work up there. So uh, we've got two big projects that are nearing completion, one in Leadville, one in Buna Vista, the B V Crossings project. So later January, we'll start selling units hopefully there. Still a challenging time for buyers. Interest rates are not coming down enough uh, yet for folks to really show interest. And of course, the insecurity of what's going on makes it really difficult for people to take that leap. Um, and many folks are still straddled with debt that they're trying to clean up and work their way through. But our client services staff are working diligently. Some of you know that process. Um, but uh, doing a great job of trying to keep people coming in the door so that they can get into those units when they're built. So um, nothing new on the horizon, other than the Two Rivers Phase Two project. Um, you may recall Dan, um, Tom Corney and Dan Thomas with uh, Natural Habitat donated uh, two lots to us in that second phase. And because of the change in the code now, instead of two triplexes, we can do a sixplex and a triplex. So nine units. So we're looking to start working on funding for that. Um, that's Division of Housing only allows us to have two active applications at any one given time. Which means we can apply for two small projects and then we have to wait six months to apply for another project. So we're stuck at this cycle of three, maybe four projects a year. And because of the scale that they are, that's about as fast as we can move. One way to work around that is a scattered site approach. And this is funding that goes to the organization that says, we know you're gonna have twelve units. You don't know which ones they are. But we're gonna give you, we're gonna award you the money for those. And when you identify those units, you can, one at a time, come to us and get seventy or seventy-seven thousand dollars to go towards that acquisition. So if a single-family home, let's say an aging couple that is ready to move out, if they were willing to sell their home at a discount and we could bring funds to the table, then we could buy down that home and make it affordable. So it's a pretty exciting new concept, brand-new program with the state, and we were able to get in there to get that funding. So doing what we can, um, partnership being a key component of our operation, being able to run smooth in that we do have rental units now that need to be managed. So Marjo's staff, uh, David Kepard's doing an amazing job of managing our rentals. Um, great close communication and coordination there. So um, as we build units and we can't sell them right away, we can rent some of them. We can't rent all of them. Um, but we can rent some of them and uh, with their management, it takes that load off of us, a lot of efficiencies with what they're doing. So it's really nice. The next step is gonna be identifying those renters and getting them into the pipeline to become homeowners. And so that's kind of on the horizon for our work together. Happy to answer any questions.
I have an eligibility question. I know a young woman who grew up here, moved away, came back. Uh, and she works online and she thinks she doesn't qualify for any kind of affordable housing.
So if she lives and or works in Chaffey County for one year prior to her closing date, when she actually goes and owns the home, um, she qualifies for our program. And we're struggling with this issue because we've got folks who are showing up and, you know, haven't been here that full year. So they're gonna have to rent before they go into ownership. Our board actually was just debating this um, quite, quite deeply because of a particular applicant that was trying to figure out how to work around that rule. Um, we want to make sure that we're serving people who are already here. And that's a commitment that we made to you and other bodies that that's our focus. So that's why that one-year rule is there. It's self-imposed. So I'd be curious to hear from you. If we have an empty unit and we don't have someone to put in it, and there's someone who's qualifies in every way except for that one year, how would you respond to whether or not we should house that, that, that person or that family?
And just let me clarify, um, C H A has different guidelines that were adopted by the board. And they were adopted, uh, I think either the first month of my interim contract or right before. Um, so I was not engaged in the whole debate. Uh, but the decision in those, you have to, they're very stringent in terms of um, work requirements, that your income is actually derived in Chaffey County, which excludes remote work. And uh, you know, I think we're we probably need to have a dialogue around whether there's options for residency and then transitioning to remote work because you do have people who've lived here for a long time that have transitioned to ro- remote work as a professional opportunity. Uh, and they currently cannot live in one of our apartments. Um, even if they've been here for twenty years. So we have that for the purposes of this same thing. We're trying to, this is kind of a discussion you guys are having tomorrow, where they're trying to put the levers on ensuring that we're providing housing for people who are here already and not necessarily just creating an affordable place for people to relocate to. But what, how do you appropriately manage those standards so that you can still benefit people who live here? So we're probably gonna take that back to the board for a dialogue as well. But there are options. Midland does not have those restrictions. Um, there might be others that do not have those restrictions. So she can always call C H A for guidance.
But being a work session, I would love to hear from you all, you know, how do you feel about that year rule? Would you come up, would there be exceptions where you could allow that to be more flexible, six months, three months, work contract? Family in town? So if an elderly person wants to move closer to their family, but wants to be independent, should they be able to sidetrack that rule, that one-year rule? Open to your ideas. Who wants to weigh in?
I say yes to that last one. I mean, it's tough to ask somebody to live with their family for a year to be able to live here. Um, I'm sure there's unforeseen consequences of that that we could explore, but I think it's an interesting prospect.
Thank you. I mean, we um, we prioritize when it comes to like contracts, right? You know, I mean, we'll have a priority for a local contract, I think, by like a ten percent or five, five percent. I mean, you know, so still not, you know, it's still a priority to have, you know, the, the local, but you know, not not keeping out that other that outside. I mean, you know, especially, I mean, when it comes to like displacement, right? We were talking about, we wanna make that a priority. Um, but yeah, somebody who's, uh, or a family that's ready to contribute and just, it's a, it's a matter of timing. It's still, that, that is an obstacle that shouldn't, shouldn't be insurmountable.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. And this is someone who grew up here, you know, uh, moved to the city, came back. Uh, you know, but came back with her job. You know, her city job.
So she's been here for years. She would qualify for one of our homes.
Well, since January, so she's close.
All right. And it's, it's the date of closing, so she could already be getting under contract and underway. And then, and then that closing date is what determines the one-year.
Right.
Yeah, I felt we had the opportunity to fill the, give somebody a home and fill a spot. And you know, it's gonna sit empty for you know, who knows how long until somebody meets those requirements. I think we, we should be able to be flexible there.
Yeah, because getting that housing working, I think, is important. So they should certainly be on the list. Uh, because when they just sit there empty, that doesn't help your programs function.
Exactly. Well, and we're paying mortgage on that, so it's not good for them.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, so Suzanne and then um, Wales.
No, I'm almost finished. You know, so they may be bringing money in from somewhere else, but they're spending their money here. That was my final thing.
What um, what do other organizations do with this? I mean, there has to be more of the C H Ts going on and the C H As. What are, what are their guidelines? Is it like six months? You have to live here six months? You have to have family. I mean, there, there has to be some other place to pull from that's working for that.
Yeah, they're, they're all a little different. And I think if our board, for example, were to revisit these, we would bring forward kind of how other, everyone updates them occasionally because you update it on need. If you think about when we started creating ours, we were in the midst of ton of people moving here and we needed to protect that from remote workers who were just trying to get out of cities because of COVID. That's changed a little, not totally. Still a very desirable place to live. Um, but yes, they, they definitely use residency requirements. Um, the times on them fluctuate. There's been, you know, you're always sort of looking at fair housing rules and trying to make sure you're working within fair housing rules, but we would do it based on, you know, what else, what else, or how, how are other people managing remote or family or those sorts of things.
Right, to see so that we can let them in or, you know, provide a place for them if there's a need for that.
It's gonna be interesting when you take this to scale because, for example, South Ark, if you start getting dozens of units coming online, then we're gonna have to get creative to cover that mortgage once it's C O'd and financed. Um, someone's gotta pay that bill. And so trying to figure out within the rules, because the state also imposes rules saying you can't rent an ownership unit, which is really challenging, but um,
Policy change, advocacy, please.
So we're gonna be spending a bunch of time in the legislature this coming year to try and fix some things, but to your point, um, a lot of the C L Ts originally had that one-year rule. Some of them have let that go. Um, I'm polling you and other bodies to find out how folks feel. I know some of the commissioners are like, no, absolutely, we want to keep that rule in place. Um, so maybe a prioritized system where if there's nobody who fits that, then you go down the priority list.
Um, I'm curious if you guys have explored um, like having a, a limit. So if it's, the house is on the market, the C H T market at least, for maybe six months, then at that point, you can release that unit to be more eligible to people who haven't been here for a year. Have you guys explored that idea?
That's definitely being talked about right now as, again, part of that priority list.
And, and I kind of like that because um, I think back, it was, I don't know, six or nine months ago, but it's indelibly marked in my brain. When we had the issue, it wasn't with housing, but it was with art and the public arts project. And the local artists, and rightfully so, were frustrated. They didn't feel they were part of what led to the rabbit going up. And so it wasn't about the aesthetics. It was more about, they just didn't feel like they were heard or they were valued. A lot of these are people that have been in the community a long time and we agreed to, if we were to do something in the future, we would bring it, have a meeting for them first before we opened it up. So I love the idea of the priority.
I would just love to add that thinking further about my comment, a little bit too much and down the rabbit hole for my last work session, but if somebody's history or hi- history of family here were to be weighed with history with the community, I think that might be the best matchup to avoid the type of elitism that might occur because somebody has a wealthy enough family that the family could move here. So then they get prioritized to move here and depending on when the family moved here, right? Because did, were, was the family here before it got super expensive or was the family only able to move here after it got super expensive? So just wanted to clarify that. I think there's probably a, a lot of um, pieces of the system to look at with that.
Yeah, I mean, uh, what we see a lot of people looking for, at least the way they're communicating to us, is it's in a caretaking situation. So they have elderly parents. Not just, I have family here.
And we know there's a huge care provider shortage. So, you know, we need them to be able to come and help their folks.
And, and Marjo, um, kind of on the topic for tomorrow, I was curious if you could speak to the changes that B B has made for their residency requirement.
That's presuming I read their policy.
You read that, right?
I haven't. So I feel uneducated to comment, other than I know they adopted an out-of-town uh, ownership limit. Is that correct? They changed it, you know?
Yeah, and that was recent that they added the requirement. Right?
Correct. Yeah, I think that was like a month ago. I will read it by tomorrow.
We do have a meeting tomorrow.
And on that subject, also, I, I noticed um, in the report, it wasn't um, really mentioned about like how we have a, an affordable housing fund in which that uh, per night, per room fee goes into that as far as weighing in the, just in the report. I don't know if other.
And on the one on S T Rs?
Yeah, I don't know if like, um, I'd just like to hear about like that, that aspect. I don't know how, what the situation is in other communities when it comes to.
Everybody has a fund somewhere. Um, so the reason I didn't necessarily include it in that S T R report uh, was one, you're not cha- you can't change that. Um, but it is part of the way in which you mitigate um, externalities or, or negative impacts, right? So I think as you go through your deliberations, it's just one of those things that you're considering as factors of if we push this lever up and down, what are the pros and cons? For those different values you're looking at, and a housing fund is one of those positive value outcomes. Um, but I didn't put it in there because the, the the, the lever itself. But I didn't put it in there because the, the lever itself is affecting something different than the total number of STRs that you have, and whether those are locally owned or out-of-town owned, it doesn't change your ultimate outcome, if that makes sense, so.
Yeah, I don't know, sometimes it, it doesn't, right? Because sometimes we get this doom and gloom on, oh, the fund, it's going to be affected by this decision, this, this decision or that decision, and I just don't see those numbers reflecting that. And I always kind of scratch my head going like, how, how could, how could that, how can those like perceptions that we receive from the STR community be so, so wrong still? And I don't know, yeah, I'm just looking for the answers.
If you were debating, if your policy decision was around, you know, the fund, which came up in the last meeting that I was at for that same topic, you know, and the, your, I'm just spitting here, but your goal is increased revenue, you know, you're looking at a different policy decision than you are tomorrow. Tomorrow, one of your discussions is will allowing out-of-town owners increase the absorption of our existing permits? You know, that would affect your fund.
Right.
You're weighing that against other externalities, so that's why I just was like, that's, you guys know that one, you know how that works. But the, yeah, I just probably could have mentioned that, but.
Yeah, just, yeah, more information on that.
Another externality will be the Housing Needs Assessment and the data from that and how it might speak to the policy decision that's in front of us tomorrow. Can you talk to that?
Sure. And we confuse these two all the time. Housing Needs Assessment and Market Analysis are very different methodologies and approaches. A Housing Needs Assessment essentially looks at how many units do we have? What are our demographics? What needs do we have? How many units are our target? And then your policy decisions are about how do we meet that target? And if part of your policy decision is to meet that target, we want to, you know, I'm not going to say it out loud, or let them free because we need more money to construct housing. You know, that is the other side of it. So it will provide good information. It will tell you probably, you know, how many, it will quantify the units of STRs and, you know, low-income rentals. You already know some of that data. But what it won't tell you is the impact of those, of that industry on housing prices. That is a very different analysis. And there are a number of municipalities, mountain communities primarily, that are going through this exercise for the very same reason you guys are. And, you know, like my memo said, it's pretty nuanced, because you are pushing on multiple levers. So it's hard to say exactly which lever has the greatest impact or whether those happen in accrue right at adoption and for a little while after, and then, you know, your effect kind of evens out. So that would be a very different, like, if you decided, we really want to understand this because it keeps coming up in our debates, the recommendation would be to contract somebody who could do that market analysis for you because it's a relatively complicated assessment. But the Housing Needs Assessment will tell us whether we're still seeing the same amount of pressure on our rental market, if there are, you know, I provided some preliminary data in here, but to really get to rents, we actually have to go back probably through, you know, three years of Chaffee Rentals and polling all of those numbers, because that's where our rental information is. It's not in Zillow. We don't have scale. And that will tell us whether we're seeing some changes in our market. I noted in my report, you know, we're seeing just our qualitative assessment is that we are seeing seasonal adjustments. But there is definitely some downward pressure on rents. As we were setting CHA rents for Jane's Place, we actually kind of set a max that we did not think the market would absorb, even though like it would really help us out with our debt service. And that is primarily because we are seeing a little pressure come off. And that could be for a number of factors. The Housing Needs Assessment will hopefully help us understand some of those market dynamics of, you know, have units had an impact, that sort of thing. But really narrowing it down to specific policy impacts in an industry, we would probably have to do an additional assessment, but they complement each other.
When, when is the Housing Needs Assessment scheduled?
That's a great question. Everyone is waiting for me to send out a new doodle. I have the teams, so I have the team and I have the draft RFP. And now it is getting the team and the draft RFP in the same room, which I hope to do very soon. And then our goal is to try to complete that by August 30th next year. Because as you know, for Prop 123 compliance, we all, every entity, needs to submit a rural resort petition. And we need the Housing Needs Assessment to be completed in order to be able to submit that application. And that would give us sufficient time, based on what we heard back from DOLA. And the reason that matters is when you're meeting commitments, right now, we can't count any new units that are not 60% AMI. And most of the units that we've been building have been in the, more around the 80 range. So we want to make sure that the city gets credit for production. That is what you can build with Prop 123 money in a resort community.
Okay, everyone good? Thanks, thank you, appreciate your peers. Thanks. And next up, we have the Ice Rink for Chaffee County Discussion. Thanks, John.
Hello. How's everyone doing? I just want to start by saying thank you for serving. I know that City Council, you're here tonight, you're here tomorrow, and you sometimes get beaten up by the public, and I think it's a shame, but hopefully tonight's discussion is exciting and fun. And I just want to update you a little bit on what we've been doing with the Ice Rink. Thank you, Kristy, for pulling up that slide. So my name is John Fritz, and I am the Board President of Ice Rink for Chaffee County, which is a nonprofit here based in Chaffee County. And we've been working to provide ice skating programming and facilities for our surrounding community. So what I want to talk about tonight, it probably is good to have context for how long we have been around, which I had way more hair when I started this back in 2008. So I've been a Chaffee County resident since 2007. And we started skating on the ponds. And so I want to take you through a quick timeline and some of the awesome things that have been happening in the few years, and then some opportunities that we have as a community. I pulled that first picture there just to see, does everyone recognize that building behind there? Yeah, that was February 2020. Thanks to the City of Salida, it provided us some funds to really kickstart what Ice Rink for Chaffee County has been able to do since then. But this was a rink with no shade, natural ice in February, and it was an awesome engineering feat. And it really depends on how you look at it. It only lasted for one day. And that was mostly because we couldn't get all the MOUs in place, and we weren't able to get started until February, and the sun really starts to hit the wrong angles back in February. But we froze the ground, created a permafrost, and it was 43 degrees that night. And we still had incredible ice in the morning. And that is, that is amazing, because we all know that water turns to ice, or ice turns to water at 32 degrees. Let's go next slide. So really quick on what we've been doing, we've never had any ice skating facilities here. We've been skating on the ponds, nothing's been organized. There are newspaper articles from like 1910 where Salida played some ice hockey games against some local communities. I think Fair Play or Leadville came down to play a high school game. It's very interesting. There was a very long history of that. But we have had a desire to get people skating on Franz Lake and playing ice hockey. So some of our most notable things, we flooded the old tennis courts. If you've been here since a long time ago, where the sand volleyball courts are right now is an old tennis court. It was 12 inches off grade. It slanted 12 inches, but fortunately, we were allowed to flood that, and we had 16 inches of ice on one side and four inches of ice on another side. And we skated for two years flooding the tennis courts, and it was awesome. It was an awesome time for our community. And then we lost that opportunity because the tennis courts went away and went to the other side, and there was concern about flooding a nice tennis court. So we've been skating and maintaining Franz Lake for many years. Some big things that happened is finally in 2019, we worked with the City of Salida, and we formed a nonprofit Ice Rink for Chaffee County. Where also, we do business as Chaffee County Amateur Hockey Association. But we received $47,000 from the City of Salida. And we acquired Ice Rink infrastructure from Alamosa. And we have a Zamboni, and we were able to put in time and maintenance and programming efforts. And so we've been able to since then create Learn to Skate programming and Learn to Play Hockey programming, which happens on Franz Lake these days, and we've got some great pictures of that. So let's just go through a few of those, so you can go spend maybe two, two, three seconds on each of these. So we now have a girls' ice hockey team. Last year was the first time, and those girls are absolutely in love with this sport, and it's so fun to see them out there. They play against Gunnison, Breckenridge, Alamosa, and Vale and Grand Junction. They go all over and play games. It's been really fun to see that. We can go next slide. This is a typical day on Franz Lake these days. It's very busy. We maintain two and a half sheets of ice, which is NHL-sized ice. That is about 50,000 square feet of ice that we maintain by putting a hole in the ice and flooding it about three, four times a week and shovel as well. Next slide. End of the year last year, we invited Alamosa to come up, and we had about 100 kids out that morning. It was, by the next day, that was open water. It was an awesome, awesome day for those kids to be able to play a game on Franz Lake, completely illegal. Next slide. We also skate up at Chalk Lake early season. Chalk Lake's a great place to play. We have a Forest Service permit up there to conduct some activities. So that's our early season home, is skating up at Chalk Lake. Next slide. We've got women's pickup hockey every weekend, as well as youth pickup hockey. And so these are just activities that we set up the boards, make sure the ice is safe, and the community shows up. It's completely free for everyone to come out and play and skate. And so it's been really cool to see people just smiling, having a great time. It's a great community effort. Next slide. We've got Learn to Skate as well as Play Hockey. So really trying to get anyone that wants to be on the ice out there, that's important to us. And so we've got some great coaches, all volunteer coaches. Next slide.
Can adults skate up too?
Adults are absolutely, yes. Well, I mean, we don't want to, I mean, I did this so that I had someone to play hockey against. There's a ton of adults out there, but we aren't important. We definitely, like, we want our kids out there with a whole scene. It's just, it's about the scene of everybody has a chance to come out and skate. So, yeah, anyone can come out and skate. We're just maintaining it so it's safe and void of cracks. The schools come out, so we have several local schools come out once a year. So we always check the ice, make sure it's safe, and maintain it before they come out, and that's been an awesome activity for them. ramps and alleys provide skating or skates to rent, and they sharpen skates at ramps and alleys as well. I believe that might be the last slide of pictures, maybe, okay, so pause there. And so we have now acquired a full-size NHL rink and everything you need to run an NHL rink. Scoreboard, the refrigeration system, the boards, the glass, the bleachers, the Zambonis. We own all that, and it's in this community, and it's from Colorado College. It's in great shape. It can actually run two full sheets of ice, and we have that in storage here. That's something that our board decided to purchase and put in storage before we had a piece of land or a home. And in that time also, this past year, we've received $150,000 in grants now from El Pamar, City of Salida, and the Community Foundation grant, which was awesome. And we purchased more boards and a totally portable setup. But we also purchased refrigeration units for a city park-style ice rink. You know, when you go to like a ski resort, or maybe you go to Colorado Springs, and there's city parks and they set up these rinks, and they even do them in Florida now, where the city in Florida can hire a company, and they'll set up a rink, and everyone gets to skate in Florida in January, and it's really unnatural. But we own one of those now, and so we are, we have a lot of capability to make a lot of refrigerated ice, which is great. Now Franz Lake looks really fun, and it is fun, and it can never go away. But it is not, it's nothing that we could ever have an insurance policy on. And so we can't do anything at Franz Lake legally. We do our best to work with them to say, we're going to clean up, we're going to make sure there's porta-potties, and, but, you know, our insurance policy doesn't cover that. We can never have youth hockey leagues there or anything official. And so that is a huge detriment to what we have. And it's a huge challenge for us. And as you know, this is not my first time in front of a city council trying to get a location for an ice rink. And tonight, I'm not asking for a location at all. We, we're just giving an update of where we're at. So we plan to build a outdoor rink to start, and this would be phase one. It's just refrigeration, open air. In this community, if you have this, this climate, if you have refrigeration, you don't need a shade. If you have shade, you don't need refrigeration, but you have to have one or the other. We are absolute experts at creating ice at this point, and all the steps are involved. So we plan to set up our equipment when we can find a location and start with just open air, refrigerated ice. That's our plan. Phase two, if you go to the next slide, we plan to put a roof over it. Because when you have refrigeration and a roof, you can do about six months. We do not have any intention of creating a year-round indoor ice rink. I think that there's been this idea that that's what we've set out to do, and that there's going to be a major failure on that. And there's, there has been a consultant in this community that is, has said that, and we've invited them to meet, and we've never been allowed a chance to meet and talk about how do we come to solutions on this. But we aim to build a seasonal ice rink that is a multipurpose facility. And as you know, we purchased land in 2024, closed on it in 2025 over at Smelter Town because we saw the writing on the wall. Budgets are tight, there's no land. We don't have a secure funding source for recreation. Our group bought land, we went for a rezone, and you probably read the paper. Poncha Springs is a fantastic location for an ice rink. We hope that something happens at Poncha Springs someday. We have, I have also seen, and many of you have seen, site plan after site plan for a park that's been proposed, whether it's Centennial or Marvin or Poncha or in BV or at South Ark. We are, we've all made the drawings. We've spent almost a million dollars on drawings and consultants' fees, and that's fine. You have to do that work. That's important. You have to do stakeholder work, you have to do survey work. The, we really want to help Poncha Springs get across that bridge with funding. And so what I want to do is make sure that you all understand some of the ways that you can get funding for recreation and why that's important. Let's go next slide, and I'm just about wrapped up here. Just another rendering of what a ice rink can look like. Again, this is an awesome climate. It's not too cold and it's not too warm. We don't need a fully enclosed ice rink. So we just need shade, like I said. So, but this would be another option, depending on the location, that we would just have shade cloth strung across the ice rink. Final, I think, picture I might have here. We're also working with the school district right now, trying to work out this temporary small rink, the, our most recently acquired equipment, so we can have a small skating rink for the public this winter. Hopefully that's something that we can all put together, and that'll just help, hopefully, jumpstart facilities in our community. This is not a full-size ice rink. This is just a public skating kind of thing. Kids can go there right after school. A lot of kids are familiar with how to get to the soccer fields, so that's a hope. Uh, so that's a, a hope that we're working on uh, as well with them. Um, we've, we've talked to every government NCD uh, there is. Uh, next s- uh, slide. So just some things to put it in context. Uh, we've raised about eight hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Um, which is pretty impressive for a group of um, ten board members that um, we don't have a home. Uh, but we have a lot of skill. We have a very strong skillset in grant writing and um, project management. Uh, and we own about one point one million dollars in equipment. Um, that's all in storage and insured. Um, and we put in about six hundred and forty hours uh, every um, during our skating season of getting up early. There's a picture of one of us. Uh, we get up at about five AM. Um, and we start um, preparing the ice for the day.
It looks cold.
It's, it's awesome and it's not too bad. It's not that cold. But it's, yes, it's cold. You have to get yourself out of bed, but you get to see your buddies. And um, we've got, yeah, kids and um, parents and all kinds of community members are involved in volunteering. So it's a strong volunteer organization, which is great. Uh, we are on the verge of hiring an executive director. Um, which is exciting as well. Uh, last slide here is just opportunities. Um, I, I think a lot of you already know some of this uh, that we, we talk about and what do we value in our community? We have a lot of needs. You hear about all the needs that we have. And I think there's a group of people that don't make it to city council meetings and it's the families. It's the, uh, I think they're busy. Um, we get them showing up to things like this, but they're maybe not showing up or uh, able to communicate. But there is a lot of people in this community that um, they love this community. They want to have affordable housing, for example, for this community. They also wanna see facilities and opportunities for their kids and for themselves. And we do not have adequate um, uh, sports facilities, recreation facilities, especially as we grow. There's no funding for that. Um, but we have a lot of special districts. Um, there could be, uh, there's several ways to fund recreation and it shouldn't be just out of your general funds. Uh, if you're familiar with a uh, a tax district, uh, you know, that's, that's what every other community has. Alamosa, Gunnison, uh, Fair Play, uh, the Summit County, the larger ones, of course. Um, so we're not just advocates for ice rink. Of course we want an ice rink, but we realize now, if we're gonna get an ice rink, we probably need to be on board with all the stakeholders. So we have been the leaders in getting together with all of the other sports groups. Um, we of course met with um, the uh, rec advisory committees, but a um, a rec district of some sort is not gonna happen from one community. It's gonna happen from, and I know this is already happening, from all of our communities and government agencies getting together to have a will to c- c- find that group that's gonna make it happen. And so how a rec district, if you did pass through a rec district, you've got a governing board and that governing board manages the facilities and the money and um, make sure that they make all the decisions, just like our hospital district, just like our school district, our library district, all these fantastic districts that make this a great place. This is another opportunity. We, we all know how important physical activity is for our kids, their mental health. And so I started out just looking for a bunch of guys to be able to play hockey with. Um, fortunately, in my twenty-five years of working at the hospital system, um, I, I, I know what we need for our community, which is we need to somehow make this kind of valuable thing happen and it's gonna happen with um, you know, a group like us perhaps championing that. And so we do, uh, we wanna offer ourselves to pull the people together at the table, uh, do the research and we've offered this to the other communities as well. Um, so we don't need money. We, we need um, sort of support, whether it's in a letter, if it comes to the school district, if we can get something going at the school district. Uh, if you're aware, the school district needs land for future potential school buildings. And that is out the fairgrounds. They have a, they have this agreement uh, an IGA with um, the county. But that deal needs to happen in order for them to uh, build out some of the soccer field space. Um, tourism is huge in this community and sports tourism is just another arm of tourism. When you can host tournaments, like if the soccer fields gets two more fields, they can start hosting tournaments and there's no regional tournaments around here. We go down to Farmington, New Mexico and there's about a hundred families that go there uh, for these soccer tournaments. And they spend tens of thousands of dollars, just our, our, our folks are leaving to go spend that. And so there's opportunities there in soccer and hockey tournaments are the same way, um, skating competitions. So there is economic um, opportunity to fund um, these sports facilities and they can be self-sustaining. So um, I think that's, you know, most of what um, I wanted to update you on. So we, I mean, I think you all get the, understand it. But uh, if there's an opportunity for you to support whatever happens in terms of sports funding or recreation facilities, things like that, uh, please know that ice rink for Chafee County is more than just a bunch of, um, we're not beer leaguers. I don't know if you guys watch uh YouTube videos or anything like that. Like we're, we wanna see great things for our community. So uh, sorry. Thank you for listening.
John, I appreciate. Any questions for John?
Um, yeah. Is there a current cost for participation for the kids or adults going out?
We uh, we're strictly uh, donation-based. Uh, so we don't, we don't have any suggested donations that we make. Uh, sometimes like currently we have street hockey going on and uh, we, that, we do have a suggested ju- donation just cause we're renting the basketball courts. But um, yeah, we're just um, we're, we're definitely not looking to create that two thousand dollar a year. I mean, sometimes ice hockey is considered a very expensive sport, but all sports have the opportunity to be extremely expensive if you want your kids to go travel and make it to the pros. Uh, this is about team building and inclusivity for everyone, so. Yeah.
It's important to note the location at Franz Lake doesn't really allow for charging a fee.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. It's Colorado Parks and Wildlife property, so it'd take a lot of um, contracting to be able to charge for anything there. Which is, could be another benefit for um, a dedicated site and being able to, to charge a fee to support costs.
I have a question for maybe Nina, Christie. What would be a logical, what might be some next steps to implementing that um, countywide tax district for, for recreation? Like, does it just have to start be- with an intergovernmental conversation?
Um, Diesel just texted me if anybody brings up what we're doing at the county. So Diesel, if you're online, do you want to answer Councilmember Nakarado's question about the work that you have been doing with the county?
Sure. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, thanks.
Okay. Um, so uh, we um, have been working with the county for about two years now on this initiative and investigating what a recreation district could look like in our community. Uh, it started with a request from your appointed post board. Uh, and the, the request was to, for me to find out what it would take for the community to fund a rec center. And that sent me down um, a path that eventually led to um, a recreation district. And um, through conversations with the county and Poncha, um, and the school district and uh, BV even, we ended up um, working with the Trust for Public Lands. Um, and they used some of their funding recently to develop a uh, very uh, cursory um, initial um, investigation into what a, a recreation district could look like in our area and included other recreation districts of similar-sized spaces, uh, uh, places. And um, ultimately, um, we just recently received uh, their estimates for what it would look like to take that to the next level um, uh, of, of study. Uh, and including kinda testing some ballot language and, and um, uh, really doing a thorough needs assessment for the county between rec centers and baseball fields and um, ice rinks and, and every, all the, all the assets, including deferred maintenance and operational uh, costs. So um, unfortunately, the estimate that we got back was um, way outside of what we could manage this year, um, even collectively with the county. Um, and uh, we are currently working with the Trust for Public Lands. They are going back to the drawing board and reducing the scope to see where it might uh, where they might be able to help us um, with this type of work. And the most recent meeting that we had was with the school district, um, the county, Poncha and Buena Vista. And we uh, that it decided that despite what happens with an estimate from the Trust for Public Lands, we were going to continue this work um, on our own. Uh, if need be with our collective um, work uh, and, and continue to investigate what it could take to find the funds for this type of project and um, for the county as a, or the community as a whole. Does that explain it?
It does. Yeah, I, I heard that Diesel a little bit about that unfortunate high number. But uh, hopefully that y'all can um, continue those uh, that work ahead. And um, if there's any way that um, any of the stakeholders can help out, um, you know, you know how to reach ahold of us for sure.
Of course. Yes, that, that time will come.
John. Sure. Um, can you talk a little bit more about what you have possibly going with the school district this year in that one? Is that for this year?
Yeah, uh, our, our hope is that um, we can secure an MOU to do um, a, a small uh, in the parking lot. Um, the, the school board would like to see uh, more parking for summertime hours uh, or the summertime like soccer scene. Cause they're parking on Holman Avenue. And so that, um, the white rectangle would be the proposed size of the rink and then we would turn that into parking for them. And in exchange, we would flood that area in the wintertime. Um, refrigerated uh, ice and um, and then go from there. I mean, that, that's about it. So we're, we're gonna pay for the electric and the setup and installation. Um, and um, we get, I guess all the soccer people get more parking.
And that's this starting in the winter?
We hope to have a contract um, in the next, if it all works out, it would be the next month or so.
Great.
And then we would get to work as fast as possible to be able to get that, um, at least the infrastructure in. And our hope would be, yeah, this winter. Uh, so if you have refrigeration, you can go until about May, or uh, sorry, March fifteenth.
But it's not permanent, so that's the drawback. It's just temporary, just for one year at a time or?
Yeah, we um, I mean, we've been pitching temporary for many years. This is as temporary as it gets. And it's um, uh, it's a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar project um, that we're willing to, to bet on. Uh, to hopefully um, turn the tide on all the projects that are um, have, have stopped in, in years past. So the ice rink, we believe in it that much that we need a project of some sort. And then um, maybe more happens in the community when it comes to sports facilities.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Anything else?
I just wanna say, thanks. Were you gonna say something?
I was gonna ask a question, but I guess.
Sorry.
No, yeah, fine.
Thanks, John, for all this. It's herc- Herculean, the amount, the amount of work that goes into it. Um, I really enjoy getting out there and playing hockey with the ladies. Um, I do get beat up out there, but um, it's way more fun than the getting beat up up here. So I just wanna say thanks. This doesn't do anything to strengthen my ankles for hockey. Looking forward to having strong ankles this winter and um, just thank you for all of the work that goes into it.
Yeah, my pleasure.
And John, how big is the portable ice rink? And then you mentioned that it's multi-purpose. Can you explain that a little bit?
Yeah, so the, the temporary rink that we're proposing right now that we have, that we have the equipment for is a uh, fifty by eighty-five. So a full-size ice hockey sheet that you would see on TV or something like that is two hundred by eighty-five. So two hundred feet long, eighty-five feet wide. So we're gonna make a regular width rink that'll be fifty feet long. And so in, if you're familiar with um, ice hockey, it'd be like one zone, we would call it, one zone. And so it's gonna be adequate for kids to be able to play hockey. Uh, and then the, the public to be able to skate around. Uh, but once you get fast enough, it's, it gets pretty tight and you wanna full-size, really stretch, stretch out your legs. Um, and um, your other question was related to um,
The multi-purpose?
Yeah, the multi-purpose. So uh, uh, multi-purpose i- is really dependent upon the location, but we've proposed um, roller hockey, I'm sorry, roller skating, roller derby, uh, pickleball, um, telly ride. Their rink turns into a movie theater uh, for um, big outdoor movie theaters. Um, really cool design. Uh, tennis is a very popular off-season. So uh, farmers markets uh, fit really nicely under the shade of a ice rink, so. But for this one, we are working with the soccer club to install artificial turf. And so that, uh, cause they really need more space. Uh, they've actually had to send kids over to the Longfellow. Um, which is fine, but um, they would like to have a, a turf field uh, inside this. So we're, we're planning to try to get some turf in there as well.
And then one more question.
Yeah.
How do you check that the ice is safe?
Um, uh, so you, you just drill a hole. Uh, 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 there's different like criteria, um, and then you have your own comfort level as well. But typically three inches of ice is what they say is safe. So we drill the ice regularly. Uh, what's great is once the ice gets started, it just continues to grow. And so we had about twenty-four inches of ice uh, last winter. Um, but you know, some of us will skate uh, with PFDs on at an inch and a half. Uh, and so that's, um, we've only fallen in, I've fallen in three times. We all have insurance policies so that if we all go in one year, we're gonna get an ice rink. It's our fail-safe backup.
You don't need to be a martyr.
If that's what it takes. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Yeah.
Okay. And we have an old friend back.
Yeah.
Yeah, Jake, welcome back.
Thank you so much. Um, I couldn't tip. Missed my last opportunity to present to you, Mr. Short. Mayor, sure, for a couple more days here. Um, uh, yeah, so many of you know me. A couple of you kind of helped to encourage the opportunity to be here. I wanna forget, uh, uh, ask your forgiveness. I'm also getting over a cold that half of town seems to have. So forgive me if I have to take a break for a moment. But um, may, a number of you have come out to see the site that we're working on out in Cleora and I really appreciate that. Um, the fact that there is so much interest building around new technologies around housing innovation, I think speaks volumes to the importance of the issue. And um, if you want to hop to the next slide, this is kind of our founding like north star. Like, we believe housing is a human right. This is an industry that has had functionally very little innovation for two hundred years. We're still putting up houses roughly the same as we were during the settlement era here. Um, that can't stand if we're looking for a different outcome. And the next slide kinda shows um, a lot of this stuff, you all live this problem inside and out every day. So I won't belabor this, but it is a very complicated problem to solve. The reason housing is expensive right now is because there are many different factors. Each, each element within that process drives up the price a little bit more every year. We don't propose to be able to solve all of that, but we do have some really interesting innovations on the technology side that we're particularly excited about and we think are gonna have really meaningful impacts on the future of hous- ho- home building here in the area. Uh, and obviously much belong, beyond. I wanted to point out a couple of things that we probably focus on that you don't focus on a ton in your current role. And that is the construction workforce crisis that we're about to have in this area and many other places like this. We're already nationwide about three hundred and fifty thousand open unfilled construction jobs. Um, that's gonna get thirty to forty percent worse as the next generation of workers ages out of that industry. There's not a lot of young people that are getting into construction today. And we believe that this technology aspect is exactly the type of thing that encourages more really smart, really driven young people to get into this field that is critically important to supporting every other industry, every other organization or sector in this area. And so we're gonna talk a little bit about how we do that. Um, but I also wanna just note that, you know, we uh, I'm gonna finish this presentation tonight with a pretty exciting announcement for us and for this community. But it, it requires public-private collaboration. You've heard me kind of over the years speak many times to the importance of that cross-sector collaboration. Housing is one where it is too big and too complicated for any company like ours, any entity, even a government entity with great resource can solve on their own. And so ever, I thank you for everything you do. And so I thank you for everything you do every day to help advance policy that helps us get more housing to more people more quickly. And we think that this is, what you'll hear tonight is kind of a big part of the future of that, too. So, next slide. Just really quickly, wanted to introduce a couple of those technologies that we're particularly excited about. Obviously, 3D printing is the sexy topic of the day. Everybody wants to talk about it. We've been featured in probably 20 news features in the last two months because everybody wants to talk about this because it is really exciting. We're gonna talk about affordability, but beyond affordability, there are some really significant benefits. We've all experienced as a community that the risks that we run with wildfire here. These concrete-printed homes are exceptionally wildfire-resistant. And in the event that there is that worst-case scenario, you start your rebuild at 50, 60, 70%. So you're not looking at a multi-year rebuild from a complete teardown. And that's really exciting. That resonates a lot with folks here. I would also say that, you know, we're like, fast fashion is falling out of style because people are returning to things that are of higher quality and more durability. That type of construction, we believe that those homes are gonna be standing in 100 years. In this fast housing moment, a lot of the stuff that's being built around town is not gonna be viable 20 years from now or 30 years from now. So we think that this is also well-aligned with just the consumer sentiment and the sustainability aspects of it, too. And then the second technology is, the bottom-right picture is a product called SIPs, structural insulated panels. They're produced in a factory environment and then shipped onsite and bolted together extremely quickly. It's 20 to 30% faster to onsite assemble that than traditional framing, and that has really big implications on cost. And we'll be talking about that a little bit more, too. So, next slide. Just to really quickly introduce 3D printing, this is the type of desktop printer that many, many, many young people have today. They're becoming almost ubiquitous for things far beyond just playing and, you know, building toys and things like that, which, that's all cool. I have kids, they love it. But we use a system that's kind of like this. But the next slide shows you what our system looks like, which is, it looks different, but it functions the exact same way. X and Y axes, you can raise and lower that, but you're essentially printing liquid concrete into the form of a house. And the next slide shows you a little bit more of what that scale looks like. So in this picture, we're actually, we've developed a way to print our own, essentially, foundation footer and stem wall. And that takes that process from about two and a half weeks traditionally down to two days. And so those are the types of things, like an example of how we're really like chipping away at the technological side to reduce each phase of the building process. The next picture just shows a little bit better example of like what that print head looks like. And it is wild to see this thing moving. I mean, you are glimpsing the future of construction. No one knows if this is gonna be 5%, 25%, 50% of the overall building mix soon. But it is, it will be a significant part. And even if that's 5% of the overall mix in the US housing industry, which is the biggest industry in the world, that's gonna create a lot of large, very successful companies, and we're proud to have a couple right here in Salida. So, next one. I'll move pretty quickly through these next couple, but that was the first home we printed in BV. That was the first home that was 3D printed and sold in Colorado. And then the one next to it, the first one took about two and a half months worth of print days to print. And there's a lot of R&amp;D mixed in there, so we don't print every day for two and a half months. But two and a half months, the second one was about one and a half months. The next photo is our first build down at Cleora, which is a two-story duplex. And this one was printed in about two and a half weeks. The one next door to that is a much simpler floor plan, similar to the first two. And that one was printed in five days, like five print days. This is amazing. You would typically have, like, a traditional framing crew, might be eight to 12 people for two and a half weeks. That was done in five days with three people. So this is like, when you get back to that, that construction workforce crisis, it's not about, and there is reasonable fear from people who are uneducated about the industry, about displacement of jobs. This is to address this looming crisis of unfilled positions. And anybody who's tried to build anything in this area can tell you that it's exceptionally hard to find contractors for anything or skilled trades because they're in such high demand.
It's like a two-year wait for a lot of them.
It is. It is. And we experience those types of constraints, too, which is why we are kind of internalizing a lot of those functions to be able to essentially be a vertical business model. Next slide. This just kind of shows you quickly for kind of just human interest, what the inside of these structures look like. The corduroy texture on the left, it can be hidden, and we do in some homes. On the BV homes, we left it exposed in one and put it under plaster in the other. The one on the right side is under plaster, and there was overwhelming consumer demand for the corduroy because it's just so unique right now. And it's shockingly natural and organic. The next slide, we'll just glance at, this is another example of the two homes in BV. Next slide is an example of some of the structures that we've either worked on or are working on currently. The top left is that two-story duplex, like in its finished state, a rendering. The one on the right, obviously, has been built and sold. The bottom one is using SIPs technology to do multifamily projects, which we'll also talk about more. But these are exceptionally versatile, and if you don't necessarily know a lot about building, architecture, design, you probably wouldn't notice significant differences in the environment, which is also important. We think it's better in a lot of ways. But, next slide. So obviously, Cleora is a big deal for us. It's been rightfully getting a lot of attention. It's going to be the first major development to be largely, if not exclusively, 3D-printed. It's one of only a handful in the country at all of that scale. We have secured 31 lots there. We're on our fourth print now, just moved the printer, which takes about a day. And so we'll be printing that next home, and that'll be roughly the same floor plan as that five-day print, which we think we're gonna be getting down to about 72 hours. So it just continues to work. Next one. We're also incorporating, this gets pretty nerdy pretty fast, so I won't spend a lot of time on this, but there is a ton of technology that can be deployed within a home to make the resident experience better. Particularly when you work with like aging residents or folks with a lot of young kids, a lot of pets. There are a lot of things that can be monitored and managed now with technology in the home, if it's the consumer, the homebuyer's choice, that are really exciting about what that means. Also, a ton of energy efficiency and sustainability aspects that come out of that smart home technology. Next slide. And this is just a little bit about the impact that we have here. We are a startup. We started two years ago, so we've basically gone from zero to 24 people in a little over two years. That's really fast. And we are contributing about a million and a half in direct payroll into this area specifically. And those wages are considerably higher than the local area median income. We haven't kind of spent the time or money as a young startup to formally go through the process to have that evaluated, but those are kind of the rough numbers that are just the reality out of our QuickBooks. The second bullet section is really important. So in addition to that local payroll, we're also spending a ton of money at other local businesses. So we buy as much of our material as we can locally. So you go to Hilton or Ace or any of these other great local businesses, we are spending money there and we're significant customers there, too. And we also work a ton with community organizations. I'm really excited to talk about the internship program that we run there. We'll talk about that in just a minute. So, next slide. So the way that we talked a little bit about this, like the vertical design, so one of the ways we're able to deliver projects faster and cheaper is that we have internal design and engineering team of four within that 24 people. And then we work it all the way through to build and sell. And so, next slide. These are some of the things that we care about. Obviously, we are a private sector company, and we want to be profitable, to be sustainable, and be here 20 years from now to realize the possibilities of these technologies. But these are the things that we care about in our community. And we've talked about the housing stuff. We'll talk about the education more, the labor and wage gap piece. Like, we're a tourism and economy, and we're gonna struggle for a long time if we continue to be that way to provide the types of jobs that afford a, the type of living instability that we all value as a year-round community here. And we believe we're contributing to part of that solution. The sustainability side, it's pretty obvious, but if you're building one house in 100 years instead of four or whatever that calculation may be, there are significant benefits to utilizing that technology. And then, of course, on the smart home and smart design stuff, there's a lot of elements to elder care that are really important to us as part of the values that we have as a company. Next slide. So the internship program, obviously, you all know Fred Maxwell and the folks that are associated with that program has been exceptionally positive for this community. We've been one of the leading companies employing interns there for those two years. We've, I think, had between a dozen and 15 associates, as we call them internally, come through that system. And one of them, a really remarkable young man that a lot of you probably know, is Felix Heater, who just graduated from Salida High School. And he actually chose to postpone going off to college because he was basically being integrated into every function within our group. So he's basically become like an extension of our executive team. And it just goes to show that's like, there are, every year we go and present to those high school classes, and there are a lot of folks that are really engineering and tech-driven that want to get into this field. Next slide. And obviously, on the hiring front, I just wanted to point out that, you know, we have between 10 and 12 open positions currently. They're on our website at verrotouch.com/careers. We think these are great jobs for this area, and we're always hiring. We have really ambitious growth plans over the next two to three years. And so we're gonna need to hire a lot of that great talent. And just to, I think we're wrapping up here, maybe one more? Yeah. So this is the exciting announcement for us. We've been working, you know, you all have done amazing things to support the Flower Mill project. I advocated for it in my previous role with the EDC. This is another example of our community solving our own problems. The things that Rob and his team have done to advance that project, it's inspiring for us. He's also, he has learned over the past three or four years, as well as anybody who's gotten into development, how complex that is. And getting projects funded means, no matter the good feelings about a partnership, like partnering with Barrotouch, it doesn't matter until those numbers work. And they're working at razor-thin margins. I'm really excited to say that we've just contracted with Rob and the team to do the three multifamily apartment buildings out at Flower Mill with our SIPs technology. And that's just a partnership. A lot of those values that we have as a company that I know you all care about, too. So we're really proud to be a part of that and be sending out a press release in the morning.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Questions? That was great.
Thank you.
I have a few questions, Jake. Thank you so much for that presentation. Is it, is the SIPs technology or the concrete, is that like an either-or thing or are you using both in some structures?
In some structures, it's both, actually. So it would be 3D-printed on the lower level with SIPs above. And then you get some of the benefits of both technologies. And we're actually developing a lot of intellectual property on how to marry those two technologies together.
Is it ZIPS, like Z-I-P-S, like we saw in the picture?
S-I-P-S.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just wondering. And then is the printer, is it possible to fit into like our tighter in-town areas? Like for printing ADUs and that kind of thing?
So that particular printer is one of two or three really significant, like, segments of the commercially available printers that are out there. That one would be tough for like an in-town, you know, city block environment doing that work in the backyard. But there are other printers that we're also looking at that basically are on a center pivot. So the robot essentially rolls into where the structure will be built, prints around itself, and then rolls back out. And that type of printer would be phenomenal for ADUs.
And then my last question, and this is not to discount, I appreciate the eye towards sustainability through the smart home technology, that kind of thing. Concrete does have a carbon footprint. A large, you know, large compared to other materials. Is anything being looked at to mitigate that, like hempcrete? And I won't pretend like I know enough about that.
I will tell you that the people on our team were a really engineering-heavy organization. A lot of advanced degrees on that team. They are looking at all of those materials. And it's, there's a really delicate dance between structural integrity and the carbon savings of reducing the amount of concrete. People, you know, I'm just the comms guy. I'm just here talking. So, but I could absolutely find out more detail on that. But we're excited about where that's going. And again, factoring in both the fact that these homes are gonna be there for a long time and you're not rebuilding, there's very limited waste in the 3D printing process compared to traditional building. And then the structure that comes of it is like exceptionally high efficiency values to the point that it's like, it's multiples more efficient than traditional stick building. So all of those things offset that initial carbon. And we're not shipping lumber across the world, things like that. But I would have to get you like actual analysis to be able to compare those things.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
And so I'm hearing you say that it's warm. You know, I lived in a concrete house and it cost me $62.50 a month. And it was cool.
Yeah.
All the time, very, very cool in there.
Yeah.
So you're saying this hose heat well?
It does.
And then what about the sound? You know, could I hear my neighbors running around in their place?
Nothing like you would in a traditional stuck-belt home. Yeah. There are some huge upsides to it. And it's very, it's, I think, people think of concrete construction and they think of like really industrial, really heavy types of materials. This stuff, and I would encourage all of you, a number of you have come out for a tour. I really appreciate that. Anybody else who wants to see it, please come out and see it for yourself, because it is, it feels so warm. And the warm feeling, not temperature-wise, that too, but it just feels so natural to live in an environment that is built out of those natural materials. People just love it. And the homebuyers that we worked with in BV are just raving about it, and they've become huge partners with us and kind of evangelizing the technology, too.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Suzanne?
First, first part is, is the Flower Mill your first apartment complex for this?
It is. We've recently booked two or three other big projects like that. And we basically brought on the expertise on our team, who has built many, many multifamily projects with SIPs before. So we are ready for it, but yes, that will be the first one to come out of the ground. That's a Barrotouch project.
That's great. Congratulations. Second, second one is affordability.
Yeah.
How do you have price points and such?
So the SIPs project that was bid, I mean, it beat all of the traditional building method bids. So like, that was not a gift to us from Rob. That was like, this technology can, has the promise to do it faster and cheaper. On the concrete, the 3D-printed concrete, we're basically at parity today with traditional building methods in terms of cost. But we're getting faster and cheaper every print. So it's like, you look at the way that extrapolates out, we're gonna be able to print homes in hours at some point in the future. And that's where the real affordability comes in. We're very cautious in how we talk about affordability because we understand that it's very sensitive. And that's the critique that everyone in the 3D printing industry gets. You go look at like, there's one giant competitor that's raised a half a billion dollars in doing this work, Icon. Their social feed's peppered with that stuff because it's like, hey, this stuff's supposed to be affordable. But no technology comes out of the gate perfect. And so it takes, you know, years of investment of capital and intellectual capital to advance those technologies. But again, once you take that problem and put it into that technology development perspective, it will get faster and cheaper, and those things just build on each other over time. And that's what has the real potential to solve this. Prior to these technologies, including off-site, like Fading West, the only innovation for those two, past 200 years was scale. So you would get a D.R. Horton, who built hundreds of thousands of homes a year, and yet they can drop prices by 50... And yet they can drop prices by fifteen, twenty percent because they're working at that scale. This allows you to achieve that or will very soon. And this is two to three years, not twenty. Um, to be able to achieve those things at a small scale, single houses, things like that. Yeah.
Thank you.
Quick question. You, you mentioned Cleora and the thirty-one. I'm just curious, like start to finish estimate how long it'll take to complete that? And comparing that to a traditional approach?
The development itself, uh, on a whole, I couldn't tell you honestly. We, we believe that we would be done, I think our plans would have us done with those thirty-one in twenty-seven. So it'd be a couple of years. Not, you know, not a substantial amount of time, but I couldn't speak to the whole development because that's not our business.
Lots of projects and how long they take start to finish to the help.
Sure. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, um, yeah, thank you for coming in. Really excited about Flower Mill. And wanted to point out too is, um, during the tour, you talked about how you guys can print in winter. And that's a really big difference to a construction that we have, like traditional construction.
Yep, and.
Of the weather elements. I mean, I think you said wind is a big one?
Wind is a big one because it basically shifts the robot in minuscule ways, but that shows up in the print quality. Um, but really from basically thirty degrees to ninety degrees, we're printing. So like we might miss out on a half dozen days in the winter that are just too cold. We also have a powder day policy, so if it's, you know, above ten inches on the snowstake, we give the team the day off. So, yeah, yeah, but you know, gotta know your audience.
Remember why we live here, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Jake.
You bet. It, my pleasure and thank you so much for having me. And um, I, my, my, it's nice to be here without an actual formal ask because that was always part of my previous ones. But I just, again, really appreciate what you have all done to support public-private partnership and good policy around housing. And thank you.
Thank you. You must have known how tight our budget was.
Yeah, right. Thank you so much, y'all.
Thanks.